For our Monday, August 14th, Board Discussion Meeting will begin with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome, everybody. All board members were provided background information in preparation for this evening's meeting. Our meeting is being livestreamed. We do have two opportunities for public comment. We have public comment before we take action on any items. If anyone would like to address the board before we take that action, there are forms up near Attorney Elwood. Please fill out a form, return it to the board table. And then, at the end of our meeting, we will take public comment on any other items. Anyone would like to discuss with the board. And again, just fill out the form and return it to the board table and you will be recognized. So we'll begin our meeting this tonight with our, under student staff presentations, we have the DEI Committee Presentation. Linda Williams, I think, are you leading this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you, School Board, for having us here. Welcome to Dr. Alanis. I have the privilege of bringing to you our diversity, equity, and inclusion board this year along with our team members. We have Melissa B. Kelly, Alex Dawson, Sarah Peirre, and also on our team, Dr. Alanis. So, we have actually been working somewhat quietly behind the scenes for the past couple of years, taking a look at the issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Part of our research has been doing folk study and then we've also been collecting our data from the Panorama surveys. So, we're going to turn to the first slide. This is from the Equity and Inclusion Survey that's given to students in grades six through 12. And you can see our results there in the three main domains of diversity and inclusion cultural, where there's an actual sense of belonging. You can see how our students receive favorable responses, so like, say, we want to thank diversity and inclusion. And then you can also see that second column is how we compare to other schools last year. This is in actual year two. And you can also, the final column shows us the change of last spring, 2022. So, the one category that I know which probably led us on the community for the past two years has been that sense of belonging. As you can see, that's at 26% of our students really got favorable. It's been at 0 to 90% of the title ranking across the nation, and we did no change from last year. So that was definitely a public spot we identified. We also wanted to take a look at the student perceptions in grades three to five. Now, we don't give them the Equity and Inclusion Survey, but we do give them the School Climate Survey. So those are the results that you have to bring now. And if I could call your attention to the bottom four of those categories. School interest in relationships, school belonging, school climate, and school engagement. Those are the ones that seem to be most closely correlated with those domains on the Equity and Inclusion Survey. So you can see before you are results of students in grades three to five. Like you can see, compared nationally, have a few common areas, and probably most discouraging is decline since spring of 2022. That actually declined down in some of these areas, or students in grades three to five. If we take a look at the next slide, this will show us those same domains for our students in grades 6 through 12, from the Super Regular School Culture and Climate Survey. So again, taking a look at those two consistent relationships, school climate, school belonging, and school engagement. These are, the results are fairly low. There's others nationally that are definitely on the rise and continue a little bit of change since last spring, but not very much. All right, the next few slides that we're going to take a look at shows some of your current data from that Equity and Inclusion Survey. It's broken down by school this time. And then it shows you from left to right, our results from 2021, 2022, and 2023. So this particular slide shows us the cultural awareness and action. And then we're going to take a look at diversity and inclusion. And then finally, our last slide shows our sense of belonging. So as we began to look at this data, it raised a lot of questions to ask. And we could probably continue to bring up even more questions. But one of the ones that we took a look at, we're going to go through the next slide, to compare a correlation between the teacher answers and the students' answers. Because we were, at the same time that we were doing the Student Survey, we were also doing our teacher's, the Climate and Inclusion Survey. And all this very interesting, those results did seem to be a lot of students were feeling. And that was very, very fascinating. There are probably plenty more of the results that we could look at and ask questions about. But I think that's already going to bring us to the next steps. So I'd love to turn it over to Sarah Peirre for her response.
So, as the committee, we looked at the data that we received from the survey. And then we also thought about our new candidate mission statement that we came up with during the student expanding sessions. And we feel like this mission statement really ties in with what we are trying to accomplish. So, as the committee, we came up with some strategies that we want to put into place this year. We start with goals, because at any time we're going to set an initiative, we want goals that we can measure. We wanted these goals to be achievable. So, using the Panorama Student Survey, we set a goal to increase by 4% at the elementary level and 5% at the secondary level. It was focused on that category of school belonging. And then we set a second goal focused on the school climate, to increase by 5% at the elementary and secondary levels. We want these goals to be achievable. And we will be monitoring them with the 2024 Panorama Survey. We'll be able to monitor and make sure we are on the right track. And of course, these are goals that we will try to accomplish by 2024. That will give us time to put some of our plans in. So, with that, we have some strategies. And what's is going to start?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, so with our, with our DEI initiative, what we would like to do is first to bring back our critical values. Re-highlight those, and we focus on them, a little bit of a refresh. And with doing that, our DEI committee is going to be putting together a series of activities that they can send out to teachers in all of our schools. These are going to be things that are easily integrated into classrooms. We don't want to put a lot extra on our paper space. But we do want to stress the importance of this initiative. So you'll see up on the screen that each month we have eight of our critical values. They're going to be highlighted. October and March, we'll highlight respect. October and April, we'll do fairness. November, December, and May will be compassion. January will be responsibility. And then February will be. What we found was that our critical values align very well with a national organization, a national program called No Place For Hate. So, we took the No Place For Hate pledge and combined them and created them with our critical values and have reported to No Place For Hate. This is something that's going to be, again, a district-wide initiative. It'll go along with that critical values launch. And what we are wanting individuals to do, both within the schools and throughout the community, is to take our No Place For Hate pledge. And we'll do the opportunity to do that this evening. And next, we have Sarah come up to talk about our monthly staff.
So in addition to the monthly activities that align with the critical values, we are also asking staff to incorporate a case study from the book Case Studies on Diversity and Social Justice and Engagement. They will be incorporating one of those each month into their monthly meeting. The, this book has already been used with the leadership team. And we feel like it is a valuable resource for increasing the confidence of our teachers and making sure they are prepared to face some of the situations that they may tackle. So that is another strategy that we'll be incorporating into the year. We also have some district-wide events that we are planning. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Alice.
All right. As you can see, we have district events going on. And we plan for these to take place throughout the year to help us reach our goals. So we have Ms. Amy Dean, the Behavior Queen, coming in August. As a matter of fact, she's going to be here tomorrow. So that's going to be some good PD for our teachers and for our staff to enjoy. We're planning on a cultural fair in May. And that's where you get to see all the diversity, all the different cultures that are in our school district, come together in a big fair. You'll get to see costumes, you'll get to taste food. So it's going to be something really exciting because it's going to bring unity. And then this is the one I love the most. It is the Student Staff Circles. And this is going to be an ongoing event. Now, what the staff circles are going to do is going to bring everyone closer together, is going to bring understanding, is going to bring learning, different cultures. So it's really interesting. So I didn't want to capture or say the wrong thing, so I wrote this down so you can get a better understanding of what I'm trying to say. Circles is going to be a voluntary, interactive group comprised of students, staff, and admin, who meet regularly to discuss and take the opportunity to hear each other's perspective around diversity, equity, inclusion, and sense of belonging in our school and community. Circles is free from judgment, a safe space, and where courageous conversations can be shared. Circles will focus on bridging the gap of understanding between our students, teachers, and staff to help promote fairness, justice, and a sense of belonging, regardless of race, culture, gender, age, sexual orientation, nationality, lifestyle, religion, and disability, and that's just to name it here. Circles will bring clarification and awareness to the different unique cultures and lifestyles that we have in our school district. Circles will build a much-needed, open line of communication without fear, where everyone can show up every day and be our best true self. There can be honest dialogue, where we can continue to envision, yield, and maintain principles, critical values, development, accountability, and intentional growth of our students and staff. PTS will not just survive, but we will thrive. Our students won't just be in jail, but they'll win. With understanding, awareness, knowledge, and application, a new perception and sense of belonging can be found.
Oh, so now I'll turn it over to.
Work to do. Guiding us up, huh? Guiding us up. Good.
Thank you.
I thank you so much.
As I stated previously, what we're asking you to do this evening is to be the first in our district and in our community to take our No Place For Hate pledge. So this highlights our critical values. PTS students and staff and community members practice and model responsibility. If I see someone being hurt or bullied, I will tell a teacher or a trusted adult. Fairness. I promise to treat everyone the way I would want to be treated. Honesty. I can be trusted, to be kind to everyone, and foster a welcoming school. Respect. I will create a place where others feel safe and happy, striving to understand those who are different from myself. And compassion. I will create a safe and welcoming school where there is no place for hate. And the bottom says, I pledge to uphold and model the five critical values of responsibility, fairness, honesty, respect, and compassion throughout the community as part of our district's mission to support schools that are no place for hate. If you'd like to sign those, I can have them. Like those for me, we're going to put them up here in the boardroom just so we can be reminded to always be practicing those critical values. And then we will be disseminating this to our school buildings.
We'll do it old school, pass it down. Take one and pass it down. All over it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Sure, we've got some questions or comments from the board, anybody?
Absolutely, I have a few. First, a comment and just a couple of questions. First, thank you to the leadership and to the team for taking on this initiative. When a lot of different school districts and organizations throughout the country are running and avoiding these types of topics, it makes me proud to be able to sit here and say, we're not avoiding it. We're not trying to say that we don't need to do better. And how we can really support everyone where it is a sense, where everyone has a sense of belonging. And as you stated, it's not just about race. It is about being a part of the community and accessibility too. Because we have a lot of students who have a lot of different needs. Same thing with our staff. So I wanted to lift that up to say thank you. And data makes us so vulnerable. So thank you for being vulnerable to share what, where we are and where we need to go, right? So I want to say thank you. Couple of questions. When, answer that. How many students, do you have a data set to know how many students we surveyed in '22 to '23? So, ta-da.
I can get that in.
Okay, take your time, take your time, take your time, take your time. And you answered the question about, and the same thing for staff, just how many people were surveyed? Because, you know, that kind of matters. And I would ask one thing of Dr. Alanis and the leadership. Can we visit this topic on a regular basis? Not maybe monthly, but maybe even quarterly, twice a year, something? Where we're having this dialogue and conversation? Because it's important. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Thank you for taking on this initiative. Our students, our families, our staff are truly in need of growing and learning, as we all are. So thank you for that. I noticed that you did say that you included how you were going, or that you were going to include events for families to create a sense of community and belonging. Have you considered, or maybe you already have, those different critical, the values, responsibility, fairness, compassion? How are you going to share that information with families? Even on, using a parent's perspective, family's perspective? How can they teach their children to, at home, be fair and be respectful and those?
That's a great point that we had worked through. So this is the Steering Committee, which is the smaller set of the overall district community, or committee, that then also feeds into those building-level representatives. So what we are looking at is the monthly focus, which has been shared with the overall district committee. We are going to have that from the various viewpoints. When we're expressing these values to our students from the principal level, the district level, as an educator's standpoint, all of us being obviously educators, bus drivers, everyone included. And then also, making sure that we are following up messaging, of course, through Parents Square, social media platforms. Of course, Melissa being a part of this is huge, because she will be making certain that we're getting that information to parents and some tips on how to foster this or to call it out when you're seeing these things, not only with your own children, but in the neighborhoods. You know, when you're at basketball practice, whatever the case may be, it's someone else's child, your own child. So there are going to be several pieces that will come with that. And we'll make sure to highlight those things in the Good News Reports also moving forward, so that you guys can see some of those initiatives as they're unfolding. We're also trying to do this organic approach with our students. We had them go to the summit that was hosted at VU alongside committee members. And it was at, put on by the Urban League. And we had also, Maceo Rainey came to our last Steering Committee meeting. He's kind of like our honorary member at this point in time. We kind of were running initiatives through him from the outside lens. And also talking not only about how our parents can help foster this and bring attention to it as well as community, but then how do we mentor students that are younger, by our high school kids? And then also making sure they have mentors from the post-secondary situations. So trying to line up all of those things, so that it's comprehensive. And then also, when we talked about like the cultural fair, PTEF is highly intrigued in partnering with us on that concept. We were originally going to try to do a back-to-school themed something. And we all decided that this sense of belonging is a bigger, a bigger need for everyone in every community. And so how can we capitalize on, like that data set says, sense of belonging, cultural awareness, all of those things, and bringing in some of those various community partners to help us? Now, I don't think that they'll be the only one, but right now that's who we've approached with the concept.
So I know that, noticed that the PTOs are organizing and, and I've seen that on social media. And I really think that's wonderful. I wonder if maybe that would be another group that, when they meet monthly, if they do meet monthly?
Yes, they do.
That, you know, someone or some information could be given to them so that they in turn could share it with the, with the parents.
Absolutely, that's a great idea. Yep. And we're also, you know, we're in the process of planning our forums for the year. And we'll be bringing in some information on that. And then just the various opportunities we have in partnering with the Chamber of Commerce, the EDC, the faith-based community, and how we can all kind of share that, that same similar concept and message, same vocabulary when our kids are out in the community. And see, again, how all of this really comes down to just having care and concern for people outside of your circle and what you consider your reach. Because in the end, if, if we all try to eliminate that whole idea around hate, we're all better off. And that's one of the things Maceo brought to us, is some of the research about hate crimes in our state. And they're on the rise, even in some of our neighboring communities currently. And the FBI and Indiana State Police partnering to really visit that. And that's just what's being reported, so.
Any other comments? Well, thanks for putting this together. I know it takes a lot of work. You know, looking at the numbers, there, it looks like, oh my God, we have a mountain to climb. But as you know, consistency, it's a big wheel to turn. And just staying consistent and on top of it, keeping it front of mind and let that wheel start turning. And I think great things are going to come from it. So I think this is an awesome, awesome work that you guys have done. And we look forward to seeing the results.
If I, oh, sorry.
We don't expect it to completely turn around overnight. But you know, again, just keep the faith, keep working it. And I think it'll, it'll all be good in the long run.
If I may add just one more item. When Sarah had mentioned that 2025 would be that real check for us on that goal. But we'll be, you know, taking the pulse and measuring things throughout. But the one thing I want to be transparent about is we're also changing when the survey is given. Because although we are not by any stretch blaming the results on the time of year that we're taking the survey, we also know that there's a lot of fatigue, because it's April, that we're taking the survey, which is our testing time. And so, one of the things we also noted was having to continuously encourage people to take it. Because again, it's just that fatigue time. So wanting to make sure that our set of data is as comprehensive as it can possibly be. So we are changing to taking it in January. So again, we also didn't want to sell the initiative short by taking that pulse check in January without recognizing, hey, that may not get us to that 4% and 5%. But it would probably give us a better response rate and also a picture that is not testing season and end of school year.
So during those student staff circles that are going to be ongoing, do, will they be addressing some of the questions that they asked during the survey?
Yes, we will be talking, we will be talking specifically about the data to our students and staff in those settings. Also reviewing some case studies that allow for the open dialogue, or the open conversations to occur without anyone feeling that it is in any way an attack or anyone having to feel defensive. That's what's great about the case studies, is they're specific to schools' situations. So they really could happen in any single classroom without ever calling into question a specific instance that someone has dealt with. Now, over time, as people become more comfortable and confident, you know, I think that what we have found is when we've practiced some of these things with DQST, some of our site-based teams have been using them, that they do feel more confident in calling into question even their, it's more reflective. People will say, you know, I have walked past before when I've heard a racial slur and just ignored it instead of addressing it, because they don't know how to address it. And there are some case studies on things like that and how to best talk through it. And I think that's what the team is saying, is these things are difficult, but so important that we don't unintentionally allow things to go unaddressed so that we make sure our kids and all of us are upholding No Place For Hate. And this gives us that common language to address a variety of situations that occur just by simply stating the expectation, expecting better behavior and modeling it, and having a forum to talk about it, so.
And a forum with, with families, so that they know when they come home and their children may or may not be sharing some of this information or how, how they didn't know how to handle it. And so they might ask a parent, what should I have said or what should I have done?
Yes.
So it's important that we connect with the families so that they, they have information.
And I know when Alice, when she was coming up with her narrative to share this evening, that's one of the things that we do plan in the future, to expand community opportunities and family opportunities to have. But, but that's going to be probably a longer process for us to figure out, get some further input, training. We're working with various groups and organizations in school districts, we will in the future, to see how to best have that in place. But what, when I talked to Maceo, one of the things he suggested is as we bring in community and family opportunities, maybe we specifically partner with Urban League and Trio and different, because then it's not, it's, it's a focus of growth for everyone involved, community-based, rather than, you know, us trying to host something as a, as a group of professionals that are just representing a committee, you know? So we've talked about how that might look on a very small scale right now to at least make sure we start to get some of that momentum. But then, looking much larger. But I agree with you that each month, something to the families to say, this, this is something to promote, you know? And how we're promoting it and how you can.
And sharing that with community partners such as, for example, childcare, after-school childcare at the YMCA. You know, so that, that dialogue goes over there too. And those individuals are, are sharing information with our children, teaching them.
Thank you so much again for being here tonight and putting the work in and making the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from the board? If not, we'll go to our superintendent's consent agenda, which has got our personnel report for August the 14th, donation report, facility use request report. Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
Second.
The motion is second? Any discussion?
I just have a question or comment, the Personnel Report. We're having quite a few individuals who are being hired and we welcome them. Do you have any idea of how many have been former Portage Township School students that are now going to join?
I can absolutely get some of that information to you. I've got several that I know for certain that we have hired that are some more recent graduates and some graduated the year I graduated. And so there, there are several that we have. There's also an interesting connection where there are a lot of people who are coming to us that they may not have graduated from Portage, but their spouse did.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll gather some of that information for you. It's, it's pretty interesting to see.
They did recognize some of those names on your House Portage trads.
It's exciting.
And just piggybacking, not instructional related, but how are we looking?
And just piggybacking, not instructional related, but how are we looking with our non-academic areas around bus drivers, the support staff? How are you feeling about that? Because I've just been reading a lot of things in the, in the papers and just throughout the country about how we're navigating, some kids are getting home like really late at night, not that it'll be us.
Right, right.
But I want to assure people that we are good to go.
Fully staffed.
We are really, we are very fortunate. We have continued, our retention of support staff is, is a really good retention rate. And as we've had openings to include now the instructional assistance and special education, now that we're hiring specifically at the district level, I think people are so used to going to our site for that information that Stephanie and her team did a great job getting all of those positions filled. We very well may have a few openings in transportation, but nothing that we can't manage with some additional coverage. And that, that seems to be working well with the tiered system, which was one of the things that was of concern when we had originally needed to put that in place. It was about 10 drivers that we were short consecutively a few years in a row. So we've done, our teams have done a really good job. Melissa continues to recruit and have some different efforts in place, and it seems to be working well. So we are not understaffed in any particular department, you know, without the, the one or two openings here or there that can be typical prior to pandemic.
Thank you. That's good. The struggle's been real.
Yep.
Any other comments? Mary Nunn, call roll please.
Where am I at? Trustee Smith.
Yes.
It's like we've been here so long. Done this at least once. Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Next up, we have our board's consent agenda, which is our meeting minutes for our regular board meeting of July the 24th. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Call roll please.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Okay, now we have our board development. Do we have any board reports?
I have one. It'll be really brief. RDC meeting on July 27th. You may all be aware that they had their groundbreaking ceremony for the Portage Garden at, at the library. And I remember them talking about this during COVID, so it's coming to fruition. They're also still working on creating some agreements and trying to figure out how to use that, that beautiful open-air pavilion by the beach because this really is an underutilized space. So I was trying to figure that out. So I'll keep you posted if I hear anything. Legislatively, the National School Board Association, the CUBE Conference is next month, I believe. Trustee Wilkie, myself, and Trustee Vasquez, we're all going to that party? Okay, cool. Okay, so we'll all be in Chicago at the NSBA CUBE Conference, and the CUBE is for the Council of Urban Education. The Indiana School Board Conference is next month, month as well, September the 24th through the 26th. I am also, I'm doing a breakout session, so if you all could come support, all right, that'll make me and a couple of other members really happy.
We won't jury you from the back.
I know, I know. Do something, throw a paper, do something. And I just wanted to share with you all regarding ISBA, most of us know Julie Slavens, probably have had some interactions with her. Her mom passed away last week, so I just wanted to share that with you all as well, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to give just a little bit of background for people who may not know about the foundation. The Portage Township Education Foundation engages the community in support of educational innovations that improve student achievement. We award grants annually to employees within Portage Township Schools to fund innovative projects and inspire our students to achieve in school, in work, and in life. The foundation is a nonprofit entity comprised of dedicated volunteers from throughout the community. It was established in December of 2006 with an initial donation of $3,000. Since then, the foundation has awarded more than $200,000 in grants to Portage Township employees for their innovative learning projects resulting in increased student achievement. We remain dedicated to supporting all Portage Township employees and students in their efforts to innovate and achieve. You can help support the foundation in the following ways. By purchasing an education license plate. At the B&amp;B when you renew your plates, if you choose the Indiana Department of Education license plate and specify Portage Township, 75% of that plate fee will come back to Portage Township Education Foundation. If you are an employee of Portage Township Schools, you can choose to participate in an automatic payroll deduction. Every payroll, your donation will go straight to the foundation. No amount is too small, every dollar helps. School board members can also participate. Portage Township School employees can also participate in the Joe Bill James fundraiser, which is held three times per year. For a donation of $5 or more, you will be able to wear jeans to school for an entire week. Dates for this year will be forthcoming. You can purchase a 500 club ticket. Purchasing a ticket will allow you three chances to win a monetary amount. These drawings will take place four times during the school year. Details are being currently finalized for this year, and I should have that information next month. You can purchase a major saver card. By purchasing a card, you will gain discounts from many local businesses and have access to many more offers. We are aiming to start this in November. I should have those details also next month. And lastly, you can make a donation at any time by contacting the PTEF Facebook page or via email at ptefinfo@portage.k12.iom.edu.
Thank you.
So the Portage Township pantry did not meet in July, and we will have a meeting tomorrow. So I'll, I'll share some information about the pantry.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. We do not have any old business. Under new business, we have the approval of the designated for residential placement.
So this is the contract that states that I am the person who approves any residential and non-residential services that is in coordination with the Indiana, State of Indiana Department of Education. And this means that I can sign those agreements and it is in compliance with the law to have this approved yearly.
And this is, yeah, we do this each year.
Every year.
Do we have a motion to approve the designated for residential placement?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Call roll please.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Next, we have the approval for the adult meal price increase.
So each year, we typically come to you with any consideration for meal increases for students as well. Thankful, as is the community, that we do not have to do that for our students as they will be receiving meals free of charge. However, we do still need to have consideration of the recommendation for adult meal pricing. And it is a requirement that we have the, we cover the minimal cost, sorry, minimally we have to cover the cost of the meal that is prepared. So at this point in time, the recommendation for an increase would be based on the calculation. So the adult meal price of $2.75 for breakfast and $4.75 for lunch.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the adult meal price increase?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say about the kids meal, I know we did this last meeting, but I made sure that I shared with others what Portage Township Schools was doing. So don't be surprised if others are going to be reaching out to you, Superintendent, about the program.
Sure.
So I just wanted to lift that up. Anytime I have a chance to shout and scream, I'm going to shout and scream, so.
I've had that, I've gotten that from a lot of people who are living in different districts and talk to them. How did you guys do that? And I say, we're a great district.
Exactly, right.
Because we live into it. We got people who were doing that. So it's up to you to take care of that on your own.
Yes. Now, as you hear out in the community, any questions regarding, do I still need to fill out the forms for free and reduced? Yes, 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 because that's tied to 21st Century Scholars and various scholarship opportunities in the future. So we still will be making certain that that's a priority. It, it does not tie to Title I funding. Linda gets her source of information. That's all collected in a different capacity in a different way, but those still should be filled out. We do not have them yet, so.
Thank you. Call roll please.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yep.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Finley. Yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Next, we have our contract approvals for special education applied skills curriculum subscription for the MTSS Habitudes SEL curriculum, for the human resources Power School applicant tracking for curriculum assessment, Power School Performance Matters, and panorama for finance, Power School e-finance, and for IT securely and securely classroom and securely vision or visitor. Do we have a motion to approve listed contracts?
I make a motion to approve these contracts, Mr. President.
I'll second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Certainly Attorney Elwood has reviewed these contracts. Call roll please.
Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Finley.
Yes.
Next up, we have our discussion about the meeting for July of 2024. So as you know, we, we took a couple of months in our new calendar, board calendar, where we said, let's go down to one meeting. As we looked further into it, July also seems like a month that would make sense, certainly to help staff. We don't have that much on our agendas, you know, we think our last meeting was 15 minutes long. So the idea there was, is maybe we eliminate the, we go down to one meeting in July next year as well. So if everybody's okay with that. I don't think we have to vote on it this time. Do we, Mr. Elwood?
We'll vote on it when the board meeting comes out.
So we did the revised board meeting calendar. This would be a second revision.
So this would be a revision.
So this would be a revision.
Yeah, so.
A revision of the revision.
Okay. All right, so do we have a motion to include July as one meeting in the revised board calendar?
I make a motion to approve.
I second that.
The motion is second. Any discussion?
Thank you for being thoughtful and intentional about that because, you know, that time is so important and if that's one less thing that the staff has to worry about so that they can be free to do other stuff, let's give it to them. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Vasquez, that was her idea.
All right.
You're welcome.
She deserves it. Thank you. Call roll please.
Trustee Smith.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Maleta.
Yes.
Trustee Finley, yes. Trustee Wilkie.
Yes.
Okay, next we have our superintendent comments.
So we've received some feedback from families regarding the relief of not having the textbook rental fees and then the meals. So again, just thank you to the board for the consideration for the meals being free of charge for our students. That is a minimum of a four-year commitment, so families can plan accordingly. I do want to just mention that although the textbook fees being eliminated is great and should be what is provided to our families and students in the state, I do want to encourage people to continue to reach out to legislators about the amount of dollars. This is a deficit as far as looking at what we typically would have collected for fees. That then becomes, you know, money that is eaten up in other places. So we've really looked, taken a hard look at our various subscriptions and things that we might have more options for teachers to choose from. We've slimmed some of those options because, for instance, I, I had the opportunity to meet on Friday with the new department chair for Language Arts at the high school, Jody Newby. And she and I were finalizing what, two programs that the Language Arts Department needs and utilizes with the full understanding that that's the front-end salary of one teacher, a new teacher. So, you know, these, these are large purchases and we want to make sure we have a comprehensive subscription of resources and different things for our students and teachers to utilize. But we also are going to be continuing to look at, you know, what are the needs and how do we, if it's a matter of training people up, maybe you're using this one because it's what you're used to, but this also, you know, can get at the same thing while then we're looking at that. So just some feedback for you. Also, I know that the Mailer went out just about two weeks ago from Rodney Poll, and that was really interesting. A lot of remarks have been made about the funding that is actually going to be decreased in this second year of the budget for Portage Township Schools. Dr. Finley, what's the amount?
Negative 1.6% next year.
Yes.
Yep.
So again, you know, the, the tell of education increased dollars, yes, but where those dollars and how those dollars are applied can look very different from district to district and whether it's, you know, more money to vouchers, more money to whatever the case may be. So I was grateful for that and we talked about in our leadership team sending out thank you to him for getting that on, you know, just the doorsteps of each family in our community. So back-to-school nights are taking place tonight. We've got Willow Creek, we've got Myers, we probably have a few others, but those are underway. I want to thank you guys for signing the No Place For Hate pledge, and we look forward to having each of our internal groups sign this and then move forward with also sharing it with our external partners. I want to thank our summer help, those individuals who come to us over the summer and sign on to help in maintenance. They will be coming, their work time will be coming to an end here, but of course, we encourage them and hope they do apply for positions in the district as they become available. Our full year, year-round employees, they have done an immense amount of work since our school year ended last year and have continued to really get things prepared for them to return. Of course, welcoming back our school year employees and our teachers and just wanting to, of course, wish everyone a great start to the school year, excited for tomorrow's back-to-school orientation meeting that will begin at noon in our auditorium for all employees. We also have our vendor fair tomorrow in the Portage High School Commons from 11:00 to 1:30, so they have that opportunity. The only other item I wanted to share with you is Sheriff Fallon. He, with one county, one protocol. Dr. Stevens still is the chair of our district, but we do have representation on our Safe Schools Commission in Porter County, and we are now going to be going to the standard response protocol. And it is color-coded, so it is still one county, one protocol, but going with some more of the universal language that's being utilized in school districts throughout the nation. So it's just an update to the protocol. We'll be making sure to have this printed and in all of our classrooms and then further making sure that the language and, and our protocols match. They do, but again, just letting you know that that update is in place.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to welcome the, the students back on Wednesday. I look forward to seeing all the back-to-school pictures on social media and personal friends that post those.
On the front porches.
Yep, all the front.
Right, right. It just, it warms my heart. And of course, as a former or retired educator and doing that first day back for 44 years, I miss it. So if anyone, anyone wants me to come by and take pictures of your children or grandchildren, let me know. But yes, I, you know, it's, it's exciting, but in addition to that, we have to keep in mind that our children do get really nervous about the first day of school as well as our staff, our adults. So, you know, you want to say to them, everything's going to be okay, and it will, but they still are, have a little bit of anxiety and they are a little nervous about it. And we just have to reassure them over and over again that, you know, especially the children that are going from, from home to kindergarten, the ones that are going from elementary to middle, the middle to high school.
Transition.
It's, it's, it's a huge transition. And so, you know, I just want to say to them, you know, everything's going to be okay, but I understand and know the excitement and sometimes a little bit of anxiety that comes along with it. And I'm still open to take pictures if you have any one. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other comments?
Are you going to say welcome back to teachers? If you're going to handle that, then I'll be quiet.
Well, yeah, I was going to say that. And I was, I was thinking about, they have some anxiety.
I know, right?
Well, that's what I said, yeah.
You don't know what to expect this year. There's so much going on and what kind of kids they're going to get and how the kids are going to feel in that. And we've got tremendous fabulous teachers and a great staff, and everyone does a great
back to Friday Night Football coming up here.
Kick the kids out day.
And all the cool stuff that comes with back to school. So I still think we're starting too early and just to get that out there.
Hey, parents need structure right now. I'm just saying. Not the kids, the parents need structure.
On behalf of the board, we do want to welcome everybody back to our end in hope for a very successful school year.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So with that, we do have tomorrow, if anyone is available at noon, the board, as many of us as can. Always nice to attend the back-to-school orientation. So if you can make it there, we'll be sitting down in the front quietly observing and enjoying and saying hello to everyone. And then our next meeting is August the 28th. We'll be back here. So unless anybody has anything else, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.